Yeah, there it is. All right, well, it is six thirty. Actually, it's a little after six thirty, so we'll call the meeting to order. Uh, is there anyone in there for public input?
Carleen.
No one in the council chambers.
Nobody's on, in, in the hall?
Yeah, I stopped the video.
No, we don't have anybody, um, online here.
All right, then we can review and approve consul agenda.
Something up here, but.
We can review and approve consul agenda.
I'll make a motion that we, um, approve the agenda as written.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Uh, let's see, John, you wanna do a roll call vote? Oh, I can do it, I guess, that's all right. Uh, Ken?
Yes.
Vic?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes, and just so you know, I was disconnected there for a little bit. I don't know what happened, but I'm back.
And myself, it's approved. All right, consent to ju- agenda items. Item A, approve nine twenty-nine, consul meeting, special meeting minutes. Item B, approve ten nineteen, consul meeting minutes. Item C, approve eleven sixteen, consul meeting minutes. Item D, approve massage enterprise and hotel twenty twenty-one business license renewals. Item E, approve two AM liquor license for Peace Rock LLC doing business as HR Pesties. Item F, approve on sale liquor, Sunday liquor for Fuji Steakhouse. And item G, approve resolution designated bowling places for twenty twenty-one elections.
I'd like to pull B. I would like to abstain from that.
All right, somebody wanna move to approve A, C, D, E, F?
I'd like to pull D, as in dog.
B and D, okay. Somebody wanna move to approve the rest? I, this is, Vic, I'll move to approve the rest of the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, got a more second further discussion? Uh, Vic?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Myself, yes, okay, item B, uh, somebody wanna move to approve item B?
I'll move to approve item B.
I'll second. Further discussion? Okay, in favor, Vic?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Myself, yes, and Ken?
I abstain.
All right, and item D, Mike, what you, what you need there?
Uh, I just had a question if we're gonna approve these. Uh, has our one hotspot been doing all right, all right, as far as the hotel business?
I don't know if Dave's on board or not, I haven't heard anything about him, so. I, I don't understand what you're saying, Mike. Uh, the one, the one hotel that we've had troubles with. I haven't heard any.
I, 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 I'm not clear what's your, which property or location you're talking about?
Talking about the hotel license.
Oh, um.
Asteria.
We, we, we haven't had, uh, any issues, I, I, I think they're doing okay, uh, COVID. We still wanna do some training, uh, with them, but with COVID, we have not done that yet. It's on our list of things to do. Uh, but, um, we have had, or I have had no complaints. I think the last time I looked, probably last month, uh, the, the calls for service there were, were reasonable and seemed, uh, acceptable, so I think, all things considered, it's going all right.
So the calls that didn't get, fell within a perimeter, that wouldn't affect them?
That is, in my opinion, that is correct.
Okay.
I'll move to approve D.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor, uh, let's see, Vic?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Ken?
Yep.
Frank?
Yes.
And myself, yes, they're, it's approved. Regular agenda items. Uh, budget and levy hearing, truth and taxation hearing is designed, it's, I'm gonna read this because it's a public hearing.
Uh, Mayor?
Yeah.
We need to, uh, we need to wait until six forty-five on that, that's a published time.
Well, does it have a published time?
Yeah, so if we could skip over that until we get to six forty-five.
We sure can, let's go back to.
Thank you.
Let's go to the police department, amend ordinance is in, how's that? Six forty-five, somebody holler at me so we can do it if I forget. Item B, amendments to ordinance twenty-six, police department. Chief, are you on board?
I'm here, um, yeah, and, and Paul is, uh, on the call as well, he can comment, uh, uh, if he needs to. This was basically a, uh, uh, a simple cleanup, if you will, or tweak to the, uh, ordinance for the police department specifically as it talk, references the, uh, use of police, uh, reserve officers. For, for several years, the city has not had one. But with the, uh, amphitheater coming onboard or online, um, we have reestablished a, a volunteer police reserve unit that will be helping us, uh, at the amphitheater. Um, this basically, this, this rewrite, uh, eliminates references to part-time licensed officers, which is no longer allowed, uh, in Minnesota. The part-time license has been eliminated. Uh, so it was, uh, and, and when we talked about this at a work session, there was a, a question about, um, um, a, the workman's comp issue, uh, it's my understanding, and I think Paul can, uh, back me up on this, that, um, volunteers, um, in this capacity would be covered under our workman's comp. Uh, so really, this, this doesn't really change the material content of the ordinance. It does eliminate part-time licenses, but otherwise, just reestablishes and, and affirms our previous provisions of this ordinance. Oh, you're muted in there.
I'm muted, there we go. You got any questions about it, consul?
Well, the only thing, the one I thought of last time was if we wanted to hire someone part-time, and as long as he's a licensed officer, you can hire him on a part-time basis, under a full-time licensed officer, is that correct?
That is correct, I don't, I don't, and Paul, if you wanna comment, uh, no, you're right, I mean, it, it, we would still, as I read it, be able to hire, I don't know that we would, but hypothetically, um, hire a full-time licensed and work them part-time. Yes, we, I think we can still do that, it's just that the part-time licensed program has been eliminated by the state. And I think that's what we're trying to, trying to address and trying to update through this revision, or re- rewrite.
Yeah, I, to speak to it just briefly, making sure that we're compliant, if there's been, and so that there is no ambiguity or question there. Uh, just making sure that we deal with that required, the language, got a slight tweak to it. And then, as, uh, Chief Bentrud alluded, it really doesn't have an impact on what you're able to do with any given police officer, the, the number of hours that you were to have an individual work. Uh, and on to that point of the workers' compensation that's dealt with by Minnesota statute. It's declared that people who are in this category of, of, of working as a peace officer, even in a volunteer capacity, by statute, compensation is dealt with for them.
All right, any other questions?
I don't think I understood the response on the eligibility for, um, workers' comp coverage. Is that a yes or a no?
Oh, yeah, they are eligible for workers' compensation by statute. They're required to be considered within the category. So workers' compensation says that certain people are gonna be considered employees, and then it defines the term employee. Uh, just for, for reference, um, farming operations, farming operations, a lot of them are excluded from the workers' compensation scheme, even though you could ex, you could define that type of a person as an employee of an operation. So when they went through the process of developing the statute, a portion of it specifically spoke to people who volunteer, for example, as police officers, and they're specifically called out as being, um, uh, as being eligible for workers' compensation benefits.
You're muted, Vic, you're muted. Anybody else?
I would, I hope to, once, uh, COVID, uh, is behind us and we are meeting in person, I, uh, I hope to have a swearing-in uh, ceremony for all of our, uh, reserves, uh, at a future council meeting.
Sounds good.
All right. I, I have no more questions, um, I'm gonna move to approve amendment to ordinance number twenty-six.
Second. All right, further discussion?
Can include the summary publication, please?
Yes.
Sure.
Further discussion? All right, Frank?
Yes.
Vic?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Ken?
Yep.
Myself, yes. Add motion passes, all right, now it is six forty-four, I think we can go back to that. To our budget and levy hearing, by the time we get there, it'll be six forty-five, I think. Can you put that up, John, or I got it?
Yep, I'm working on it here, just.
Probably, I got it on my iPad.
Yeah, if you just.
We gotta have both of these pieces of equipment.
I got a lot of stuff to toggle here, just bear with me.
I got it here, we, you're looking for it.
Here we go.
There we go.
There it is.
There we go. The Way Park City Council will hold a public hearing on its budget and on the amount of property taxes it is proposing to collect to pay for the cost of services the city will provide in twenty twenty. Proposed twenty twenty-one budget is nine million one hundred ninety-two. That's not right. That's, there's not enough something in.
Nine thousand?
That says nine thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty-six cents. Boy, we should get a budget like that. Proposed budget represents a five-point-one increase from twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Proposed twenty twenty-one levy is eight million four hundred and fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars. Proposed levy represents a two-point-seven increase from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. This meeting is being held via Zoom, and the public can join the meeting via Zoom link below to speak if they would like. In addition, the public may provide written comment, they can be emailed to Shawna Johnson, City of Way Park, or members of the public can also come to City Hall located at nineteen thirteenth Avenue North to the council chambers, they can speak in this location as well.
Mayor Miller?
Yes.
The correction is nine million one ninety-two one thirty-six.
Okay, nine million one hundred ninety-two one hundred and thirty-six.
The decimal should be a, yeah.
Should be a one. All right, it was, it was opened up at, uh, public hearing was open at seven, at six forty-five. Is there anybody to speak at the public hearing? John, you have anybody in the queue anyplace, or any, at the city hall or anyplace?
We have no one at city hall, and we don't show any, any, um, unknown people in the queue here.
All right, if not, we close the public hearing at six forty-seven, I need a motion for that. A motion to close? I'll second. All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor of Vic?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Ken?
Yes.
Frank? What happened to Frank?
Sorry about that, I was muted, yes.
All right, and myself, yes, that, all right. Then it is, the public hearing is closed, and that's all we have to do with that, the final one will be December twenty-first. All right, item C, unbank currency exchange license renewal. Chief, we don't have any trouble with them, do we?
No.
No, we do not.
All right.
I'll move to approve, do we have to?
We have to do a public hearing, John, right?
That's what I was getting at, do we need a public hearing?
Yeah, we do. Ah.
Think John's trying to open it.
I wasn't sure if you wanted me to open or not, I can open it, just take me a second here.
I can do if I get, if I wouldn't have screwed it up on one.
Nope, no problem.
Nice to have two computers, I could run one side and look at all of the stuff and participate at the same time, that's a cool.
Yeah, you know what, you can keep them for now for a while, don't worry about bringing them back.
I got it, John, oh, there it is. Please state notice that the Way Park City Cons- Council will hold a public hearing on the seventh day of December twenty twenty at six thirty PM or soon thereafter to consider the twenty twenty-one currency exchange license for unbank located at one forty-seven Division Street, Way Park, Minnesota pursuant to Minnesota statute fifty-three A dot zero four. Due to current Minnesota orders to prevent public gathering, comments may be directed to City of Way Park Council by mail at nineteen thirteenth Avenue North, Way Park, Minnesota, or email to Carla Burnick at City of Way Park. Comments will be rece- received until forty-third, four thirty PM on December seventh, twenty twenty, and will be entered into the public record for the meeting. All right, did we get any comments, Carla?
There were no comments given.
Okay.
I'll move to close the public meeting after the appropriate amount of time has gone by.
Yeah, it's long enough, one for forty, forty-nine to four fifty.
All right.
I'll second. All right, I have a motion and a second for the discussion. All in favor, Mike?
Yeah.
Ken?
Yeah.
Frank?
Yes.
Vic?
Yes.
Myself, yes. All right, then I need a motion to approve the license. I'll make.
Approve. I'll second.
All right, further discussion? All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Vic?
Yes.
Ken?
Yeah.
Frank?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, they're in business for another year. Item D, preliminary plat Coryview Acres, Robert and Helen Trisco. I would assume that's yours, John?
That is, I'll have it loaded in a second here, it's just a, it's a sizable PDF, so it'll take a moment. Oops, all right.
That's good, I can see everybody now.
You'll just get a little moment here.
Must've hit the wrong button.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of tabs to manage on this, on this system right here, just bear with me. Here we go.
Hasn't this one been under the planning commission more than once?
No, it has not, um, it, it was just the planning commission, a, a sole, single time, I'm gonna try to zoom in here. So basically, what we have is the, the Triscos with their property on Granite View, uh, excuse me, on Granite View Road, they're proposing what, uh, they're calling Granite View Acres, which is, which is a, a total of a sixty-nine lot residential subdivision. Uh, they, uh, would like to begin, uh, with the preliminary plat here, but this would be, um, solely the preliminary plat. The idea is that, that they would, um, eventually start with final plats in parcelling in phases. The first one would be a, um, approximately twelve to eighteen parcel, uh, single, single, uh, um, smaller subdivision with a cul-de-sac on the, starting on the western side, uh, right off of one thirty-seven. Just getting into the plat here. So this is a, uh, a sizable subdivision, it's the culmination of, uh, quite a bit of work for the Triscos in, uh, having enlisted the help of, uh, SE, some of the designers at SEH, um, in a separate silo from John Halter's service listed here, although John has, uh, coordinated on the project as well.
John, I have a question for you, how did, or how are the utilities gonna be brought into this subdivision?
Um, well. This is John Halter, I'm not sure it was John it was directed to, but I'll take a stab at it, uh, there's actually already a couple of different utility stubs into this site, so it's pretty well set up with utilities back from that two thousand eight project, so.
And the idea is that is, assuming that there's some success in the first phase, then they would continue over time with the additional phases. The intent isn't to build it out all at once, and, you know, of course, knowing, uh, they'd have to see where the market goes, if it's, you know, very successful, and move faster. Um, but the phases would be done incrementally with the utilities, that they're not gonna put utilities in for everything and then have them sit stagnant, um, not to incur those costs until they would know that they're gonna be sold off. This also would have some benefit if it does move forward, in that, uh, it, it could potentially situate the property owners to the south or nearby for an easier connection in time, we know that those properties, um, the utilities lay at a, a deeper depth, and if they're, they're nearby, um, due to this development, it'd be an easier grab to go get those. Um, there isn't a timeline for this, um, since they submitted this to the planning commission, the Triscos, um, I've had some contact with them, and they're a little bit apprehensive of the, um, some of the results of the, the presidential election. Um, it's something that, to each their own, but they, they have decided to, to back off a little bit from, um, marketing this for right now. But the, the pre- the preliminary plat would stay valid for a year from any time of its approval, and they could come and pursue the, um, you know, starting phase of a final plat if and when they're ready. Um, but I, I know initially that they did hope to begin marketing these lots over the winter after we receive a final plat, and, and that's eventually approved, uh, with the intent that they would, uh, perhaps have a, a, a couple buyers line up in spring. I know that there's at least two people I've spoken with personally that have expressed interest in parcels out there. Um, so that would be a start, but it would up to, it would be up to the, the applicants to, to market as they see fit, you know, thereafter. But I, I do think it's a nice.
So do you want, uh?
Yep, go ahead.
On, uh, I'm assuming it would be most of those lots to the south there would be in the first half to the cul-de-sac in around.
Yep, the first phase, um, I don't, I'm, I don't know if you can see my cursor here, the first, the, the first phase would most likely include what they're referring to as granite circle, which would be that cul-de-sac that's nearest to one thirty-seven.
Okay.
That would be the first, and then it would be split off thereafter. Um, they are showing on the southern side some parcels that are, you know, fairly small for the area. Um, that's just a little bit of a placeholder, uh, anything like that, you know, eventually would require some, um, you know, some further review approval, there's, there's no harm in doing it in, in the preliminary plat, which is more conceptual. Um, nothing is set in stone until the final plat would come, but they are trying to shoot for a mixture of, of parcel sizes, you know, that's where you get the, the, the typical cul-de-sac, because then it, it, uh, you know, you have a variety of parcels that, um, shapes and sizes and locations at various price points to, to make it as widely marketable as you can.
Would this also help with that possible development to the west of one thirty-seven there?
Uh, I, I, it, it could, uh, I don't know that, um, you know, it, it would really be more on the eastern side, because that, on, on the property owner to the south, um, it, it would certainly be easier if they run utilities eventually down all the way to the south to hook those houses on, you know, once this would be fully built out, assuming it does, does get fully built out. Um, I don't know how much, you know, how much help it will be to the properties on the, on the, uh, western side of, of one thirty-seven that we, we looked at previously. It may get the, the utilities a little bit closer to them, um, certainly won't hurt, but we haven't really reviewed it in that context for those particular properties.
All right, any other questions? Otherwise, I need a motion to approve the preliminary plat.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat.
I'll second.
All right, further discussion? All in favor, Frank?
Yes.
Ken?
Yeah.
Mike?
Yeah.
Vic?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right. That takes care of that, huh?
Thank you.
Good bet. Now we're at the police officer position.
Wrong one.
Uh, that's, we had that one already, we, this is the position itself for the police officer.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I, I know that, I just, I've got, um, a ton of tabs open, so I'm trying to work through them here, I gotta start closing some.
Well, I guess, we, we can just go with it, uh.
Yeah.
We interviewed, we interviewed two police, two people today for, this afternoon, this evening, for the police officer position, and, uh, Vic, you wanna take that?
Just pick Derek.
Hey, Vic, sorry, I forgot. I'll make a motion to appoint Hannah DeShager, um, to position a police officer at, uh, pay grade five, step one, uh, contingent upon the employment, uh, screening and background check process, um, and employment effective January eleventh, two thousand twenty-one.
Just a clarification, the police officer position is a pay grade seven.
It'd be a pay grade. My fault, pay grade seven.
It's okay, just wanted to make sure we got it right, thank you.
You probably should say on or about January eleventh. January eleventh. On or about.
Yeah, I don't think you need to put the date on there, typically, we just negotiate that, it's just conditioned of our, upon the employment background.
All right, we'll delete the date. All right, I got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, further discussion? All right, all in favor, Mike?
Yeah.
Vic?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Ken?
Yeah.
And myself, yes. I had to wait for my clock. Approve, uh, let's see, approve bills.
Approve bills.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor, Ken?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Vic?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Uh, I do have one other thing here before we get to, to what Mike wanted to talk about. I don't know, I don't know who got this besides me, but anyway, we haven't had a meeting for a while, so way back in October, we haven't had a meeting in, that I remembered it. Uh, I just wanna say that Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities has awarded Shawna Johnson the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Excellence in Service Award. Hey, nice.
All right.
Thank you.
The worst part about it is we're not getting a free meal out of this.
No.
Well, I respond, but I didn't understand, so that's why. Oh, all right, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities.
Yes.
Has awarded Shawna the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Excellence in Service Award. Fantastic, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, uh, that's all I, let's see, we had one other thing.
What about the council, uh, for Boy Scouts?
Yeah, that's, that's where I'm going, yep. Mike?
Um, well, since our last meeting with the charitable gambling fund, uh, kinda talked to Ken a little bit, seeing that he's, uh, involved with, uh, Boy Scouts, uh, from what I understand, one of their major sponsors dropped out this year. Uh, so I'd like to, uh, make a motion to, uh, give the Boy Scouts an extra thousand dollars out of our charitable gun, our charitable gambling, uh, for the, the Christmas, uh, program that they put on for the local citizens and, and the people in need at that time.
Are they gonna do it, Mike?
Yes, Frank, we are, um, you know, typically, in an average year, we, we serve somewhere between six and hundred, six to eight hundred people. You know, um, probably three or four hundred, maybe five hundred would be served down in the basement of the church. Now, we, we cannot do that. So we're going strictly with contact delivery, and then drive up, you know, people wanna drive up and get a meal. Um, you know, a big thing is, yes, um, we did lose one major contributor this year, and then with having to deliver more meals, you know, we normally do a couple hundred deliveries, we will probably in that five to six hundred, well, then we have special containers, we keep the food in. You know, our costs are gonna elevate quite a bit. But this is our thirty-fifth year, so we decided, if, if we can get, you know, you know, approval by the state, we're gonna do it.
So, do you have the staff to deliver all them meals, or how, how? Or they're gonna get, give them?
Okay, well, in a, in a typical year, you know, we probably have about sixty to seventy people that actually help with the whole thing. But we use ten vehicles to deliver meals. You know, this year, we're gonna move to go to twenty vehicles, um, and doing the delivery that way. So hopefully that'll, that'll be enough vehicles to get everybody, but if, you know, you got six, seven hundred people, and if you got twenty vehicles delivering, that would give them about, you know, thirty to forty stops each, so we should be able to handle it.
Alright, and what's the conclusion of this?
I, I think this is a good idea, I think it's a really good idea. I do, I have a motion, I need a second.
I'll second for discussion.
Alright, further discussion.
What was the date of this, Ken?
It's a, this is done on Christmas Day.
Okay, I'm done.
Okay, I think this is a good use of our money, I, I think it goes through the, it's a Way Park thing, I think we have the money, I think it's a great thing. My only thing I would say for twenty twenty-one would be that from now on, and, and we've done it before, and I'm not picking on this one or anything, 'cause we've done it before, if we want more money or wants money, I think they should put a request in for it. It shouldn't come from commissioners or the mayor. You know what I'm saying?
But actually, this, this was the, for the original, um, thing, there was a letter put in for it.
Was there?
They, we, we do have that request in.
For two thousand?
Yes.
But this is a next two thousand.
Correct.
So that was, that was my, that was my comment, sometimes we.
Right, agreed, yep.
I don't have a problem with it, so, okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, yeah. It would be helpful, Ken, if you'd split them up, so then we know it's like two different events you're trying to do, and I think that would be, uh, much easier to, somebody knew what, what you were doing, so. No, it's a good use of the money.
Yep.
Alright, all, all in favor, Vic?
Yes.
Ken?
Yep.
Mike?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Uh, Shawna, do you have anything?
Just a reminder, we do have a closed meeting scheduled for Wednesday, this Wednesday, the ninth, um, for union negotiations, um, and that meeting will start at four thirty. The agenda did go out on that.
Great. I've already put it on my calendar, I won't forget. Alright.
That's all I have.
John Holter, do you have anything?
No, sir.
I think that's the only people we got left. Chief, did you have anything else?
Nothing here.
Chief didn't have anything, chief didn't have anything, okay.
Oh, we're good, we're good.
Thank you, John, for running the meeting.
Yep, thank you.
Yep, glad it worked okay.
See ya.
Yeah, it looks like seven oh seven.